My tie straight first.
It's important. Okay, I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, August 26, 2019, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were just a couple items in the table file?
Yes, there was a draft of my goals for 2019-20. Again, we're not asking to vote on those tonight. It's the first draft. There were also some personnel items, including appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment, and leave of absence. So that's your table file for this evening.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. If there's no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Tom. Is there a second? Second by Owen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board?
Hello, everyone. My name is Malia Fallon. I'm with the Northfield Healthy Community Initiative. I'm the Youth Engagement Director. And as many of you probably know, the Northfield Healthy Community Initiative, monthly awards an award called the Making a Difference Award. And that is done for a person that makes a difference for youth in our community. And today I have three young adults here to help me present this award.
Okay.
I'm Jack.
I'm Ryan.
I'm Grace.
And this month for the August Making a Difference Award, we are presenting this award to Val Merdestorf. And as a Director of Finance for the Northfield Public Schools, she has gone above and beyond in working with students funded under Northfield Youth Bank. And Northfield Youth Bank is a local grant-giving organization that is youth-led and it's primarily for youth. Oh, for youth. And she has been really instrumental in helping student grantees help fund their projects and serve as a fiscal agent for them.
Yeah, Ms. Merdestorf works with students to understand budgeting and resource management, making sure that they understand responsibilities they have with their money. And there's a lot of projects that wouldn't have happened without her, and we're really grateful for that.
I was one of the grantees. I worked on the Bathroom Equity Project last year, and she was our financial agent. She really explained the grant process to us because none of us knew what we were doing. And it was just wonderful to have someone who was able to explain what to do and how we would get our money once we were granted the grant. And she really took us seriously, which was really wonderful as youth in the community to have someone do that for us.
Now, before the three of you get away, we want to just be sure to get your last names as well for the...
Oh, I'm Jack Rizzo.
I'm Ryan Malika.
Grace Meath. Okay, thank you.
And so, taking youth interest seriously and helping to see youth to develop their skills and acting as a support is what the Making a Difference Award is all about. And she really simplifies that. And from Northfield Youth Bank and HCI and all the youth that she's helped, we'd like to thank you. Thank you.
And Wes?
Okay, so can you guys gather around her so I can get a quick photo? Sorry. And then, I know your family too.
Can I take this one?
I'm not sure if this is a good background with the light back. I would be better. Okay. Come on, you got one with your family too.
I suppose. Didn't know they were coming.
That means you too, Nick.
Yeah.
Definitely a family.
And I just want to add on a personal note, Val is amazing, and Youth Bank would not be what it is without her. So personally, thank you very, very much. Thank you very much.
So, within our administrative team, we talk a lot with our folks who haven't had teaching experience or have been teachers in the classroom, that even though they may not have been teachers, once you start to work for the school, you are an educator, whether you like it or not. And Val is just such a great example of that. You know, she comes from a finance background, working for a public auditing firm before she came to the school district. But this is just another example about how our team, regardless of their position in the district, looks at themselves as an educator. And so, we all know how awesome Val is, and we're happy other people recognize it too.
Wilson. Wilson. Okay, excellent. That was fun. Okay, so now we'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I just have one other. I mean, how can you top that? We have just one other set of announcements this evening. This morning, we had, I'm guessing it looked like it was all of our staff gathered at the Northfield Middle School Auditorium for our Back to School Breakfast and our recognition of years of service and Teacher of the Year, Educational Assistant of the Year, and Friend of Education. And so, I just want to thank all the folks who are involved in that. Anita Ozzy is so critical in organizing all those things. Erin Bailey, who is the person who puts all of the script together and helps make sure everything is where it's supposed to be when I get to deliver it. So it's always, again, other people do the work, I do the talking. It's a good arrangement for me. And just, you know, thanking the people who came out and really engaged in some real important work today. So I do want to just take a moment and share that we honored people for 35 years of service today. That was Susie Wonderlich and John Schnorr. In fact, we figured out that they think that John Schnorr has worked with over 2,000 children. And think about that, that's individually in his work in that birth-to-six range. 30 years of service. Jackie Meyer. Craig Kuhn. We also recognized people who had completed, even if they retired. Mr. Kuhn is retired, but we still recognize them with a plaque. So Craig Kuhn, Bubba Sullivan, Deb Tomberg, Mary Beth Youngblood, Beth McLune, and Lee Murray, 30 years of service. 25 years of service, Julie Walner, Nancy Becker, Janet Amundson, Deb Bedeen, Mark Enzru, Denise Halverson, Jill Lordson Cole, Amy Moller, Renee Schuster, and Renee Treblehorn. And 20 years of service, Deb Rasmussen, Jeff St. Martin, Scott Sanus, Elizabeth Brewer, Pam Charlton, Ethan Friar, Dawn Jandro, Sherry Schwab, Sari Zok, and Tammy Schwagerl. And what I think is really important is we do talk about Northfield being a destination district. And when we see this list of people who have spent 20, 25, 30, or 35 years working for us, that shows that we retain our staff very well. And so, this is always one of my favorite events of the year, to get to honor people for the great work that they've done with kids over the years. We had some great music provided by a group named No Harmful Side Effects. I had to get a chuckle out of that one. And that was Paul Allesley on the bass, Brian McLaughlin on the guitar, and Ethan Friar on the trombone. And we also had three very distinguished student speakers today. So Kayden Staub, a fifth grader at Greenville Park Elementary, Riley Graber, an eighth grader at Northfield Middle School, and Northfield High School senior Ava O'Parra Brantner. Three very powerful messages really reflecting our prioritization of relationships and how people in the school have made a difference for them. It was really heartwarming to hear these three students speak and share their very positive experiences in the Northfield Public Schools. We also have the Northfield Education Association who sponsors three awards every year. I was personally very proud that my wife, Mary Hillman, was named Friend of Education. You know, Mary does a lot of things at home and things that I can't do or that she does because I'm here with you folks and a lot of behind-the-scenes scenes things. And it's very nice for her to be recognized because she does really mean it when she says we do good things at our house for kids. And so, that was a family treasure today to be able to see that. Janet Amundson was our Educational Assistant of the Year, and Mary Beth Youngblood of Greenville Park was Teacher of the Year. So we want to congratulate all three of those award winners. Very, very deserved. We also had, I think, an excellent yet challenging workshop today. The Equity Alliance of Minnesota was in to present some information and train all of our staff on implicit bias. This is a very important topic that was really important for all of our staff to hear, not just some of our staff. And this is the only time in the entire year that we get everyone, custodians, child nutrition, educational assistants, teachers, administrators, where we can get everyone in the room. And I want to thank Regina Seabrook and Sebastian Witherspoon and Dr. Marcellus Davis, who just knocked it out of the park. An excellent, excellent presentation and really challenged our staff in a good way toward growth. And so, I was very pleased with this morning's work, and I think that the fact that all of the breakfast was gone tells us that people enjoyed the food and they enjoyed the music. It was just very an energizing way to start the school year. So several board members were there. Chair Pritchard gave some opening remarks. We thank you for that. And again, we thank you for your support as we start the 2019-20 school year, which is off and running as of this morning. So that's the only announcement that I have for this evening. And again, congratulations to Val on her Making a Difference Award. So, and that's the way it is for August 26.
Excellent. So, anything board members would like to add?
And thank you to Dr. Hillman. That was a thing you implemented your first year as superintendent, the Off-School Breakfast and Program, or District Breakfast and Welcome Back Breakfast and Program. And it's just really a great event and how often does an organization be able to be in the same room with each other at one point. So it's really a very strong event, and it was our pleasure for the board members that were able to be there, to be there. So it was good morning.
Okay, so we will move on now for items for discussion. First, we are actually at our last two school improvement plans already in August. So we will begin with Scott Sanus, Sibley Elementary School, Continuous School Improvement Plan. Welcome.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate being here. I still smell like bacon from this morning. Served up a lot of bacon. That was the preferred meat choice today. But thank you for having me here tonight to share the Sibley Continuous Improvement Plan with you and share a little bit more about Sibley Elementary. I feel blessed to be starting my 21st year at Sibley when I first started there. Is there like a ring somewhere?
Bruce will take care of it.
All right. When I first started there 20 years ago, 1999, I did not need these, and now I need these quite often. My staff is used to seeing me wearing these in the classroom now, which is a good thing. I had to give into that. But we have an extremely supportive staff at Sibley with a great parent population. We have volunteers from St. Olaf and Carlton and the Northfield community who support our learning on a daily basis, which we enjoy seeing. And we're excited about the year ahead and looking forward to what opportunities come our way and what we can do for students at Sibley. I want to start by saying, you know, last year we launched the continuous, or the Collaborative Literacy, Collaborative Literacy Program, and I couldn't expect a better rollout than what we had. Our teachers were so well-prepared to start the year because of the training that they had in that. So we're really looking forward to what's going to happen with year two. Tonight, I'm going to be sharing some of the key components of our work this past year and provide a glimpse of what lies ahead as we embark on the 2019-20 school year. I also want to add, you know, Dr. Hillman talked about all of the folks today at Northfield Middle School who were there for our opening. We had our staff meetings at each of our schools this afternoon, and the energy in the room at Sibley was out of this world. It was great. People are excited to be there. It is the second year in a row where I have not needed to hire a teacher. So we're bringing back our same staff, and that's the first time that happened. My 19th year was the first year that happened. Or my 20th year was the first year that happened where I wasn't hiring a licensed staff member. Now, we've added a couple EAs, and we did bring back a teacher who was on leave for a few years, but that person is familiar with our staff. And, you know, jumping off from that point at the beginning of a school year is a huge advantage. So our folks who are there have been there. They know what they're working on. And, you know, as of right now, we're getting prepared for Ready, Set, Go Day, which is Wednesday morning at Sibley. As I move into the slide presentation, please feel free to stop me at any time if you have questions, and then there will be an opportunity at the end if you have questions or comments. Our Continuous Improvement, at Sibley Elementary, we focus all our practices on students and their continuous improvement academically, socially, and emotionally. We strive to work with families and communities, support all aspects of each and every student. We've worked hard at developing a growth mindset with both students and staff, and we actually started that staff development with our staff members, kind of teaching them what the growth mindset was all about, and then had them launch that with their classrooms. Literacy, Math, and Social-Emotional Professional Development is occurring each month at Sibley Staff Meetings. So at Sibley, we basically have one business-type meeting a month, and then we have one staff development staff meeting a month, and those happen on Thursdays. And on the other Thursdays, we have our other committee meetings and whatnot that take place. But I want to highlight that last one, that literacy, math, and social-emotional. I meet with the literacy, math, and behavior coaches on a weekly basis. We meet here every Friday at 1:45, and we plan our staff development for that month during that time. That's Tanya Will, Becky Gany, and Peg Witt. Our 2018-19 School Improvement Plan Goals Review, all six grade levels have partially met or completely met mid-year and end-of-year SMART goals. We have reviewed the preliminary MCA data, and while we have some individual wins, we also have some areas of concern that are being addressed. One of those areas in particular across the district was our fifth-grade math. And that's something that we saw come through when we had the preliminary scores come through. Our math coaches, along with Mary's guidance and leadership, met with our fifth-grade teachers, and they have developed a plan that we hope will help our students see what they need to see and learn what they need to learn prior to the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment in fifth grade. We also provided CCC training. I already highlighted that. It was instrumental in the rollout process, and it's even more important now. You know, I always talk to new teachers about year one is, everything's brand-new. And year two, you learn it again. You know, you experience it again, but you have some background knowledge. And year three is where they really get traction and take off. Now, with CCC, we talked about that last year, that this year they'll have that background knowledge. They have that been-there-done-that kind of attitude. So I think we're going to see bigger and better things with our CCC this year. The other thing is, you know, we implemented it at every grade level. We didn't roll it out, you know, starting in kindergarten and then first grade. So we're kind of backfilling in a few areas, but we're going to see that take traction along the way as we move forward. Key Reflections from 1819. The PLC SMART goals at each grade level were stretch goals and based on prior MCA data, data gathered about a year ago at our Ready, Set, Go Day and during the first few weeks of school. Now, we don't catch everybody at Ready, Set, Go Day because of vacations and other plans and that kind of thing, but we do make sure we get the assessment information either next week or the following week, once we get rolling. Our PLC teams have been pretty laser-focused on their goals, and the student achievement was raised because of their efforts. We at Sibley believe we need to maybe do a bit of a reboot with our PLC teams and kind of go through the practice again of, this is what a PLC team is all about. Everybody has a role and responsibility, and we're going to do that as we get into September. The Move Five Literacy Effort in Grade Three continued and had a positive impact in third grade yet again. We've been working with our folks here in town, and we're looking at possibly doing a Move Five effort with first grade, second grade, and third grade. So that's something that you will likely hear about as we move forward. I think Mary has scheduled the Move Five meeting for 9:00 on Friday morning. Is that right? So we will be meeting on that and working with folks on how to move forward and bring grades one and two into that mix. And then, like I said before, that CCC rollout was a huge success. Our 2019-20 School Improvement Plan Goals, our kindergarten reading, 100% of the students identifying 100% of the tested letter sounds within either year will be 90% or higher. Kindergarten math, 90% of the students will identify 30 random numbers correctly by the spring of 2019. Now, that's random numbers between 0 and 100. And I think that's written on the plan. The number of students meeting their fall 2019 to spring 2020 MAP target growth score will be 70% in reading and math for first grade, second grade. We're looking at the same goal for them. Third grade, the percentage of students outperforming the fall MAP predictor proficiency will be more than 10% in reading and 10% in math. And what we did there is, we don't, because we were weeding the testing a bit, we test our third, fourth, and fifth grade students in the MAP in the fall, but not the spring. In the spring, they take the MCA. So we wrote a bit of a different goal for them. Fourth and fifth grade, we have MCA data on these students. So the number of students meeting or exceeding their MCA target score based on their prior year's scale score will be 60% in reading and 65% in math. I'm going to be brutally honest, I heavily rely on HOPE to help us figure that information out as we move forward. Our social-emotional learning will increase the number of students moving from at-risk on the fall to not-at-risk in the spring, from 43% in 2019 to 50% in 2020 using the SABERS composite score. And at SABERS, we do it Sibley in the fall and the spring. I know at other buildings, some have fall and maybe winter and spring data, but as a district, we all do the fall SABERS and the spring SABERS. And then, climate goal, and this came out of our parent satisfaction survey. Last year, we did the results rollout for the parent satisfaction survey. And what came back to us at Sibley, and I think it was a common theme throughout the district, is that our families wanted more positive contact on a more continued basis. So what we're going to do, and I know Nancy included this in her plan as well for Bridgewater, is we're going to make sure that all of our students receive at least two positive phone calls, emails, or notes from staff members prior to April 1, 2020. And Matt and I talked about what Nancy's doing at Bridgewater with the postcard plan. I brought that up to our staff today, and what we're going to do is brainstorm what works best for us. That postcard plan sounds fantastic, and I could see us using that. What we've done every year is we've used at least two staff meetings where I, but we have scheduled staff meetings, and I ask the staff to write at least three positive messages or make three positive phone calls to families during that time. And then what they do is they copy me in on the message that they send out. And the coolest part of this is, when I'm copied in, is the reply all back to the teacher, you know, just thanking the teacher for going out of his way or her way to compliment a child. Our strategies and assessments for 1920, we're going to support PLCs to address the needs of all students and use PLC data, MAP, MCA, EM4 is our everyday math, and then CCC and Common Assessments. We're going to use that to inform our instruction. We're going to strategize through the SST process, how to support students with academic, social, and emotional needs. Our student support team meets every Tuesday morning, and it includes our coaches, our school psychologist, myself, our school social worker, one special ed teacher, and then the teacher of the student who we're discussing. And we use that as a launchpad to initiate interventions and, you know, try to help our students be as successful as possible in the classroom. We're going to continue the momentum with our Collaborative Literacy and our Social-Emotional curriculum. We're going to use positive communication with families to build relationships that I mentioned, and we're going to implement what's been learned in our Responsibility-Centered Discipline Training, which we have coming up this Thursday. And I don't know what the final count is. I'm guessing it's going to be between 150 and 170, but we have the training that's going to occur in the Sibley Gymnasium Thursday from 7:30 to 3:30. And if you have a chance to stop in and kind of take a look at what's going on, please feel free to do that. It's all of our elementary, all of our licensed teachers who work in our elementary schools will be taking part in that. And thanks to Nancy Antoin for organizing that for our elementary group. That's all I have for you. I do know that when I do present, or when any of us present, there are some questions that come up. So if you have any questions or comments, I'm certainly here to try and answer those.
Excellent. Thank you, Scott. Questions, comments? Any?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the presentation. And it's interesting to see that you have very clear goals that you've set out. I am not as into all of the things as the teachers are, so I was hoping you would explain to me a little bit more about how the targets are set. And also, my other question is, what it means when a student's at-risk or not-at-risk?
So targets, like for instance, the MAP test, when a student completes a MAP test, they will get a RIT score. And I don't think RIT really stands for anything specific, does it, Matt?
It's a specific measurement.
Yeah, but they'll get a RIT score, and then they'll get a target score, a projected score that they should try to achieve by the time we get to our spring assessment. So that target score is computer-generated, and it's something that, you know, our teachers know about. It's not something that we come up with. It's something that the measure of academic progress establishes for each student.
RIT stands for RASH unit, and I believe that the RASH was one of the people who was behind the original measure of academic progress. And so, that's a specific unit that was developed there.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have sort of mixed feelings about, on one hand, it might be very objective, but on the other hand, they don't know the students, and they don't know what's going on in the students' lives.
Right.
And it seems that that's, you know, have this outside target.
Right.
Both good and bad.
Well, and it's just one way to measure where a student's at, you know? And when we look at assessments, we look at is, that's how they scored at that particular day and that particular time. And, you know, there are a lot of other things we do, the authentic assessments that take place on a daily basis for us to really get a sense of where students are at academically. And then, to hit the question on the social-emotional piece, is the SABERS does measure, it looks at risk factors. So we really don't typically give this SABER until the student has been with us for at least 30 school days. So six weeks of school, and that allows a teacher to really get to know a child. And they will do this SABER assessment on every child in their classroom. And then, as the year progresses, they will have another opportunity to do that in the spring. So we're looking at, what can we do from the social or emotional side of things to support those students that are technically at-risk based off of the data on that assessment?
What are they at-risk for?
Socially or emotional kinds of things, like distress of some kind. So if you, I mean, we'd be more than happy, I think the person to really talk to about this is Peg Witt. She's been leading the charge in our building, and if you ever want to stop by and take a look at what that looks like, she could certainly do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
The SABERS is an inventory that we ask teachers to complete, and the questions are based upon evidence, there's evidence that indicates that if a student has certain things that are observable in a classroom, that those things are, what the evidence suggests is, those things could be areas of concern where students might need additional support. So I think what you've heard is this combination of using a criterion-referenced assessment like the Measure of Academic Progress, where it's taking a look at where the student is objectively academically. I believe the Measure of Academic Progress is one of the most evidence-based assessments that we have. It's nationally normed. It is something that looks at each child individually, so we get that academic side that's different than your traditional standardized test. When I used to proctor those as an elementary school principal, I would tell kids, you're going to get some questions that are so easy, you're going to say, "Mr. Hillman, I can't believe they asked me this question, it was so easy." But you're also going to get some questions that are really hard, because in order to know what you know, we also have to know what you don't know. And so, that Measure of Academic Progress, while it is a computerized assessment, it does provide our staff some incredible data about each child that, because remember, data in the hand of a teacher who knows children is incredibly powerful. By themselves, right? Less powerful. The SABERS, we have been looking for, that we've been looking for several years for the right assessment to measure social-emotional learning. And it's the Social-Academic-Emotional Behavior Risk Screener, I think, is what that acronym stands for. And again, that's an example of how teachers are really getting to know people, know their students, but then they're actually looking at what are those potential risk factors to make sure that no one gets missed. Because sometimes you may not notice a student's behavior, but there might be some other things that you have observed that could lead you to believe that the student might need some additional support. So I think that this is an excellent example of what I would call holistic assessment, right? Because we're looking at, you know, all sides of the student, understanding that, you know, we're looking at the whole child. So I really do appreciate the clear goals, and I do think that it would be good for us to have our behavior coaches come in to talk a little bit about year three now with second step. I think that's a presentation that we will put on for the fall here to ask them to come and share a little bit more, because it's really some success story information.
Right. And one of the things that we do, or we have done, for students who are showing some risk factors in that social-emotional area, is that we do have some silent mentors, that we have silent adult mentors who, they get to know the student, and they are another adult in their life. They may not cross paths on a daily basis, basically within the schedule, but it could be an educational assistant who volunteers to maybe stop in and say hello to a certain student every day and see how they're doing with their progress in reading. that we have silent adult mentors who, um, they get to know the student, and they, they are another adult in their life. They may not cross paths on a, on a daily basis, basically within the schedule, uh, but it could be an educational assistant who volunteers to maybe stop in and say hello to a certain student every day and, and see how they're doing with, with their, their progress in reading, that kind of thing. So the Silent Mentor Program has worked out well for us in the past, and it's something that we, we look to continue moving forward.
Excellent questions, Amy. Uh, other questions? Ellen?
Great presentation. I really appreciate the individual grade level goals and that they're stretch goals. Um, so I had one probably stupid question and then another one. So my stupid question, which I would also ask of Greenville Park, is so Nancy had her Saber goal written a little, a little differently than the way that Greenville Park and Sibley, so I'm having a hard time understanding the at-risk and not-at-risk. So like, when I look at it, like, it looks like forty-three percent at risk to fifty percent not at risk. I must not be understanding.
Well, what we're looking at doing is the students who are identified as at-risk in the fall, uh, we, last year, forty-three percent of those students who were at risk were not at risk in, in the spring. So this year, our goal is to make, try to get fifty percent of the students not at risk in the spring.
Oh.
So it is written differently than, than Nancy's goal. Um, I did talk to Hope about that, and I, I, I think this is probably the best way to write it after our discussion.
Okay. And then my other cool question was, you mentioned jumpstarting the PLCs, could you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure, well, you know, I don't know how many years we've been, we've been doing PLCs, it's ten years, and when we, when we rolled out the PLCs, we were, were very good at making sure that everybody knew their roles and responsibilities of the PLC. Since we've gone through that ten years of PLCs, we've added probably half our staff has turned over. And I really believe that, that as a school and probably as a district, we need to, we need to roll that out again and, you know, and teach everybody what the PLC is about. And in saying that, uh, I'm not saying that we're doing a bad job, I'm saying that I think we could do a better job of being more efficient if people understand their roles and responsibilities within a PLC. And, you know, I look at some of our PLC groups, and none of them were actually here when we, none of the, none of the individuals in a PLC were actually here when we rolled it out. So it would be a good service, I think, from our perspective, when we've talked about this administratively, that it's something that we need to do, uh, moving forward. So we have great role models, and most of our folks have worked with somebody who was in that initial training, uh, but may not be there anymore. So I think it's something that as a district, we need to, we need to launch.
That's great, thank you. Other questions, comments? No?
Thank you for the report. Uh, the information you provided us say that seven of the nine goals for math and reading were not met. I'm gonna put a positive spin on that, but I need your help.
Sure, well, when we write goals, we write them as stretch goals. It's something that we want, I mean, we're reaching for the stars with those goals based on the data that we have, and if we attain those goals, fantastic. If we don't, you know, it's, it's not necessarily the end of the world, but we need to, you know, regroup and see what we need to do to actually get there. So, so they're written as stretch goals, and, and I would say, um, we could, we could probably set the goals a little lower, but we're always gonna be doing whatever we can to make sure that we're getting, you know, one more student up to where he or she needs to be, or two more students or five more students, if you look at that Move Five effort. So that's, that's why they're where they're at. And we, I, I wrote them again the same way this year as stretch goals, hoping to, hoping to attain that.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Jeff?
Just wanna say thanks for the report and congratulations on twenty years of the district.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Come.
Um, thanks for the report. Um, so you mentioned that the fifth grade math fell behind and that was district-wide. Is there a reason?
So, Tom, we have to be, uh, the, the MCA results get released this Wednesday officially, so we just have to be careful about, um, how much we talk about those results publicly, but we, there's a, I think there's a couple of things that I can say that, uh, we have, are looking into. Uh, number one would be the fact that EM four, our, our everyday, it's called Everyday Math is the name of our curriculum, it's affectionately known as EM four, it's what's called a spiral curriculum. And so you will learn something, uh, when my youngest son went through it, he would say, "We learned that in second grade, we learned," and, and yes, you did, because what would happen is you were reintroduced to the concepts each year, and then it's built upon, you know, from the previous year. And that can work well for a lot of students, but what we know is that there are some gaps with Everyday Math specific to the Minnesota State Standard. So, uh, there's no curriculum that is written specifically for Minnesota. We did an update of that curriculum two years ago, three years ago.
Two years, right.
And what we've noticed is that especially in fifth grade, where the expectations on the state assessment jack up. I mean, the fifth grade assessment is, is different than the fourth grade assessment. We are learning that there are some gaps in what is addressed from the standards perspective. So as Scott mentioned, our math coaches, and actually I think quite a few of our fifth grade teachers spent the summer going through the preliminary results, mapping it to what we teach, what were the areas that we were not successful in, are, are we explicitly teaching those in fifth grade, are there things that we may need to bolster in the areas that need the greatest room for growth? And then looking at how can we supplement that curriculum in order to do that. So that's one part that we know happened. I will be straightforward too, that, um, implementing a reading curriculum is sweaty work, there's no other way to say it. And we often see, researchers will tell us, you will often see an implementation dip in the first year that you implement a new curriculum. Um, I think you'll see that, um, we, we probably flew in the face of that a little bit, we can't talk too much about it, but we also have a feeling that the implementation dip may have played out in mathematics rather than in literacy. So that's another hypothesis that we have, that we're looking at, um, in terms of that. We also have to come back and recognize that, uh, while we, uh, supplemented instruction through e-learning days last year, we did lose ten of, ten of the eleven, uh, days were within what I call the sweet spot of the curriculum year. And so you can't downplay that either, that even though I think we did some very good things, and I think you'll see that some of these results play out at the state level as well, uh, the fact is that when we had that amount of interrupted education within a short period of time, those are three things that we think could contribute it, and when we provide you the, the full report on the official MCA results, you'll hear those and more hypotheses that we're testing as well. I think I danced around that pretty well.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I have a couple. Um, so super excited to hear that we're looking at Move Five and trying to roll that out into, I know there's funding that is attached to Move Five, but, you know, but I think it's really, you know, and is there, um, you know, lessons learned kind of thing that we can implement in other classes, and that was one of my questions, so it's really exciting that that's taking place. The second question I had is, um, in the past, Sibley has been, um, spearheading the Praise to Reprohan Initiative, and I didn't see that. Is that something that with the Responsibility Center Discipline that you decided to, to maybe move away, or is that still initiative you just didn't?
You know, it's something that I didn't put in the report this year, but it is still something that, that we, we look at. Uh, last year, what I did, um, our, our academic coaches go into the classroom, and I had them do some charting for me too, from the Praise to Reprohan, so we had a lot of data last year, and our goal was four to one. Uh, last year, I think we were right around two point seven five to one, um, as a group. Uh, some of our folks have truly mastered it, and others are, are still working on it. So it is still something that, uh, is on the forefront at Sibley.
Okay, and it's the Responsibility Center Discipline, um, workshop, sounds great with that many, um, teachers, and, and when Nancy was here presenting Bridgewater's School Improvement Plan, she had a really interesting and exciting things to say about it, so we'll look forward to the recap on that.
We are looking forward to that as well, and, and, you know, to see what we, what can we do, um, after we hear that and launch here in our district, so.
And then two other things we can't let it go on, uh, notice that your, um, positive affirmation around the professional development going into the, uh, collaborative classroom curriculum, affectionately known as CCC, and thanking Mary Grace Hansen, who's here for, um, that professional development schedule, and we, we know when that program was being selected in the curriculum, and one of the things that we kept hearing as a board is the strength of the professional development, and we're seeing that come to fruition, so, um, congratulations to everyone who made sure that professional development happened. And then lastly, of course, dovetailing what Jeff said about twenty years, that's just fabulous, and as you come before the board every year, obviously your experience and your tenure and your understanding of your students and your families just comes through, so it's really, really exciting. And I just wanted to wish you all well with the renovation and the additions that will go on with Sibley. As I said to Nancy, you are kind of, uh, boots on the ground for that one.
Right.
In terms of fielding concerns and questions from parents and communicating, and we know that's not till, uh, November, but that will be here sooner than later, and you will be, so we thank you for not only what will happen during construction, but what has led up to that, and your, your help with the plans and making sure that the stakeholder groups were well representative, and your own, you know, obviously attendance at all those meetings was really key, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on now to, um, Sam Richardson, who will present Greenville Park Elementary Continuous School Improvement Plan. Welcome, Sam.
Thank you, and good evening, uh, to the board. We are really excited at Greenville Park. Um, we had some fencing go up that, um, is, uh, starting to secure the site for the construction project, and so our theme this year was really celebrating the past and looking back at, uh, from nineteen seventy-one until twenty nineteen and eventually twenty twenty, all the different people who have made Greenville Park an amazing place to be as students, staff, parents. So we are, um, looking forward to, um, kind of celebrating throughout the year, and then at the same time, we're creating the future together as we, um, are looking forward to celebrating groundbreaking on September tenth, and, uh, have, um, had a chance to talk with the construction management team, and people are really excited to see, um, some things happening next door, um, to our, our current site. We have, um, our, our school improvement plan, um, for, um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and, um, I think one of the things, after being at the school for two years, it has, um, been so clear that, um, the entire community at Greenville Park comes together, um, to help, uh, all students be successful. And last year, our motto, um, we adopted was every Gecko, every day, and we wanted all of our, um, all of our students to receive everything possible that we can give them. The community school, um, is a huge, um, asset to our community. The, uh, staff members and, um, that are in support positions are very talented and dedicated, and then our teaching staff, um, they truly believe in, uh, what Dr. Hillman talked about today, in, in relationships and how important that is. But then they know the students so well and, um, their academic needs, and pour their hearts in, into teaching those students. As we look back at last year, um, you've already heard many of, um, the comments from the other two elementary schools about the collaborative classroom, and Greenville Park, um, had strong results with that first year as well, and felt, um, that it was a positive experience both from the strong professional development provided, um, with Mary Grace Hansen's leadership, and then also, uh, with the ongoing, um, support from our literacy coach, Diane Torbenson, and then their work in PLCs. Kindergarten, um, continues to have, uh, strong results with those earliest learners and met their goal. In, uh, grade one and grade two, we used the NWEA, um, Measure of Academic Progress again, and, um, both first grade, um, first grade met their goal, and then second grade, um, did not meet their goal. With our goal setting in, um, in our meetings with Site Council, we're always looking to have goals that will stretch us. We're looking to have goals that include, um, as many, uh, our staff members as possible who can have, um, some ownership in those pursuits, and we're also wanting to take a look at what we know about the students and where they're at and, and where they can move to. So the Measures of Academic Progress allows us to look at students in the fall and see how we can move those students throughout the year. In our third through fifth grade, um, cohorts, we take a look at their Measures of Academic Progress scores in the fall, and we determine that, um, we can, uh, through statistical analysis, they can give us a, a projected proficiency rate for that grade level cohort on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments in the spring. And, um, our third grade, and I know we're, um, not sharing the results of those, uh, Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments yet, but our third grade did not meet their, um, their goal completely, um, but they did exceed what was projected, and we had set, um, a pretty aggressive goal of exceeding by five percent, and they were very close, um, but had strong results. Our fourth grade did not meet, but was very close to their projected, and our fifth grade, um, did, uh, meet the goal, they exceeded that, what was projected, uh, from the fall. In the areas of math, um, we took a look at our EM four unit tests, and through a tracking system, uh, the different grade levels and their PLCs were able to monitor their progress. And, um, as you can see, a number of the grade levels, in fact, all the grade levels, kindergarten through third grade, met their goals of having, um, students on those selected Everyday Math tests be at eighty percent. So six of the eight units, uh, they were using for that data. In fourth and fifth grade, uh, we did see a dip, um, our building-wide percentage was seventy-eight percent, we were hoping for eighty. Uh, so like, uh, Principal Santis shared, you know, that's a stretch for us, and we, we know that, um, but we wanna, uh, learn from that and, and increase, um, our performance next year. And kindergarten students were working on those, um, number identification tasks, and they, they did meet their goal, um, in that area. Ninety-six percent of the students, um, knew numbers that they were tested on, you know, from zero to a hundred. Our behavior goal, we set a very specific behavior goal for twenty eighteen, nineteen, and that was looking specifically, um, at one of the behaviors, and that was in the area of defiance and not following teacher directions. When asked, we had, um, two categories, one is for, um, behaviors that are more significant, we consider major behaviors, and then there's a, um, other behaviors that you would consider, um, less intense and not needing as much intervention, but they still happen, and we wanna make sure that we document them as we help students, um, improve their behavior. Uh, we did, uh, meet our goal, if you're looking at those overall major behaviors, we reduced majors from, uh, fifty to forty-one. We also had, um, a slight increase in the overall, we had, um, reported seventy-five versus seventy-two overall. So in that regard, we did not meet that goal. Um, in our Site Council discussions and in talking with teachers, um, part of the reporting system, uh, we had encouraged, um, teachers and worked with the system to help, um, have reports, um, completed, and, um, in looking at some inconsistencies in our program, we're learning about how we can do that better, um, to have, um, our data, you know, we want people to report, but does that reporting increase the number? We're gonna investigate that.
Sam, could you just define what SWISS is, and can you just explain a little bit?
Sure, yep. So the SWISS system is, um, is a way that you can look at school-wide intervention, system, behavior, uh, reporting, and, um, it's, it's a way that you can look for, uh, trends in the data, the data for student behavior, time, location, um, types of behaviors, and use that, uh, for strategic planning for how you, uh, support students. And it's something that, um, is inexpensive, but is a, a cost for a building, and, and many, uh, schools have used this, um, as a way to, to track data and, um, help see those trends. Some key reflections, um, the teachers with, um, the support that I mentioned earlier, really embraced the collaborative classroom, um, curriculum in this first year. Also at Greenville Park, um, we are fortunate to have a number of support, uh, systems in place, and I mentioned some of those. Last year, we introduced two Reading Core tutors through the AmeriCorps Reading Core Program, and, um, had some amazing growth, um, through that program. Connie Nelson, uh, helped us, um, start the, the program with Diane Torbenson coaching, and, uh, we just saw amazing results through that. We also, um, wanted to figure out, um, a more collaborative and integrated way to provide extra supports, so with our Title One AdSIS program, and, um, with our volunteers from Carlton, St. Olaf, and the community, uh, we wanted to make sure that students were receiving those interventions without missing core instruction. And so we developed, um, an integrated schedule or coordinated schedule, and, um, with our leadership team also developed what's called a win time or what I need time. And that was our targeted time where interventions could happen for students at, um, whatever, um, subject content area or location they needed, and they wouldn't miss their reading instruction or their math instruction. So this first year, um, that was So, this first year, that was really an advantage for us to provide those interventions. Also, through the collaborative classroom, they have an intervention program called SIPS, and that was new to us. And we had great results with that, with our Title I and AdSIS teachers using that with students. The strong math results for the kindergarten through third grade continues. As you heard from the other two elementary schools, we're still looking at that fifth grade math score with the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments and trying to look at where alignment of our curriculum and where our gaps might be, where we could address those and raise those scores. Also, this year, one of the big changes for Greenville Park was the addition of a second behavior coach. And in the second year of the Second Step Program, then, we were able to revise how we support students in both in the classroom spaces and also in small group to provide extra individual instruction and social-emotional learning. Again, for 2019-20, as our team gathers, it's a really strong group of teachers, veteran teachers who know students, know student data, and we're always looking to determine how we want to shape our goals so that as many people as possible in our school are involved. And with the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments being third through fifth, we've sought out ways to make sure that kindergarten, first grade, second grade are all working with us and our support staff. In the area of literacy, kindergarten's continuing with their goal for this new group of students, looking at letters, sounds. In grade one, the percentage of students meeting their student growth targets, again, with that measures of academic progress in reading. And for both first grade and second grade this year, we're looking at the current cohort and how they performed and looking at taking them to the next level. Mid to upper 70% in growth for those students is really impressive and hard to repeat or increase. And so, grade one is looking at a 2% increase. And grade two is looking, they're receiving a cohort of students that had an amazing 75% growth score. And so, as the test format changes in grade two, students hear the test auditorily in grade one. In grade two, they lose the ability to do that and they start to read the test on their own. And so, we're going to have a stretch goal of maintaining that 75%, which data trends tell us will be a stretch goal. And then, through the fifth grade, we're selecting to do the same, where we're going to look at how students come in in those grade levels and set those aggressive goals to increase by what's projected by 5%. Math, we're going to continue looking at those unit tests. And this year, key work has been done with the math team district-wide to revise some of the unit assessments to match to those standards and better align. And so, with that in mind, they'll be exploring the new assessments with Everyday Math IV with an eye on those standards and aligning those. And kindergarten will continue with their same goal. In behavior, in the area of behavior, this is what Principal Santas shared with us regarding the SABERS composite score. And as he defined at-risk and not-at-risk, we'll be looking at that once again. This past year, as we looked at the overall score for students in the fall, 30% of those students moved out of the at-risk category by the end of the school year. And so, we are going to do a stretch goal and move that to 37% in 2020. And that is our goal. And one of the pieces with the SABERS that I would add is that we have used that, and Dr. Hillman talked a little bit about maybe finding some areas that students need some more support in, that maybe don't reveal themselves each day. And then, also, our behavior coaches, our academic coaches, our school psychologist, Lindsay Sherry, social worker, Joy Amunrud, they reviewed that data in the fall and really do a wonderful job of making sure that supports are in place for the students that are showing that need and asking questions about ways that we can better support students in a collaborative way. As the other schools have mentioned, this is the first year that we had an opportunity to receive the Parent Satisfaction Survey data. Greenville Park had a very high score for, and our top score for the percentage of families that rated feeling respected and welcomed in the community. And so, that we felt really positive about, our efforts to welcome families. And the community school presence, I think, has a big part in that. And then, also, an area that we wanted to improve was the area that seems to be a trend across our schools, and that is receiving positive phone calls, emails, or notes about the family's children. So, looking at a satisfaction mean 3.7 and increasing that. Our Site Council leadership team is looking at having two positive comments for all of our students received during the year. That can come from the classroom teachers, and in addition, it can come from any staff member. And we are creating a menu of options. And we are also asking parents, what's the best way for us to contact them? So, we want to make sure that we are communicating with them in a way that will best meet their needs as well. That will happen during Ready, Set, Go Day. And then, once the menu is created, teachers will work with me to let me know how they're going to best do that communication and log those in so we know that those communications As we continue, I think as we move to this new year and this exciting year, we want to make sure that as we have this new building that's being created, that we're continuing to improve and how we serve students and kind of honing our craft so that when we enter a new building, we're at the best that we've ever been. The second year of CCC or Collaborative Classroom Implementation will be, I think, a great year. We're launching this new year with positive results and many lessons learned. And teachers, I know last year, felt like they were in a graduate course studying each night to prepare. They'll have already see some areas that they can do more efficiently or maybe in a more integrated way. They're excited for that. We have three Reading Core tutors this year, so we are going to increase our services in that area for kindergarten through third grade. And we'll continue our intervention support with Title I AdSIS and more involvement with our literacy coach. And then, we continue to improve our win time model and how we serve students through that. As other principals have mentioned, revising unit assessments and a fifth grade team looking at how curriculum resources and how the instructional plan aligns with the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, where are those gaps? And then, like the literacy coach, our math coach, we have a Title I Intervention Educational Assistant, Kelly Edwards, and Heather Riden work together to support students in the areas of math as well. The addition of the second behavior coach allows us to provide some small group instruction for students outside of the classroom and then also have instruction in real time with Melissa Larson and Chris Johnson teaming to help students when they need it, but also have some proactive small group instruction. And then, we have an amazing partnership with our academic coaches, our behavior coaches, our behavior team, which includes our special services, staff, psychologists, social work, special education teachers. They really have worked together to support our students. And then, the trainings that were mentioned there. A few of the things that go along with the Parent Satisfaction Survey I mentioned, and we're excited to see if we can improve our scores with our parents and, most importantly, make stronger connections with them throughout the year in that area. I think that's our year. And one of the things I would say about Greenville Park is we, in the process of looking at our data, are constantly reviewing. And there are some hidden wins that we find that don't always show up in official reports like this, wins for individual students who have made amazing growth or overcome some obstacles. And then, certain grade levels and certain students that made amazing growth. And as we look at that equity lens of making sure that all students are learning at high levels, I think we are able to see certain areas that we still want to grow. And we celebrate each of those small wins in different areas.
Excellent report. Thank you. Board members, questions, comments? Ellen?
Great report. And it was nice that you've mentioned that there's some individual students, but I think that they're, you know, seeing a lot of these met goals is really exciting, knowing that you had stretch goals. That's great. My question was, you had mentioned when you were talking about the SABERS, you started talking about how it's informing supports going forward. And I know that in the SIBLY report, Principal Santas had talked about these silent mentors. Can you tell me a little bit more at Greenville Park, how the at-risk and how this data is really in their hands informing supports? Like, what does that look like?
Sure. So, there's two ways. One is the addition of the second behavior coach allows for social-emotional learning groups to happen. And so, these are regularly scheduled groups that students that we know and teachers know, parents may know, need some additional supports, can refer students to. And then, these group sessions are held. Sometimes, they can be held during that win time, what I need time, if the students are not receiving another intervention in reading or math. Other times, they're scheduled creatively with teachers. And there are different topics. They might be students on the emotional side where they're working on confidence or dealing with some anxieties. For the social area, it might be working more on friendship skills or finding ways to handle conflict with others in a positive way. So, it really depends. And the behavior coaches are talented at putting a positive spin on it and really making it something that is supportive of the students and protects their dignity as they go to these groups. We provided the teachers with the opportunity to complete the assessment in fall, winter, and spring. And so, in the fall, it was really to check and see, are there things in place? And so, for some of these students that might be receiving some special services or some mental health support through Fernbrook, for other students, it was through these groups. And then, in the winter, obviously, looking for growth and the number of students that maybe weren't needing that and weren't showing that at-risk category. And also, we have new students moving in. And so, we want, in that winter, if they've moved in since the beginning of the year, that's a great time.
Sam, you've talked a couple of times tonight about your second behavior coach. And I'd just like you to explain why Greenville Park has a second behavior coach where the other two elementaries don't. And could you talk about how that is funded, please, so that everyone understands how you have the funding to be able to do that second behavior coach?
Sure. So, Greenville Park, and Val here, if I say it incorrectly, but we are allotted some compensatory funding that comes to schools based on their qualifying, which is free and reduced lunch population. And that is funding that can be used to target areas that we're unable to support as completely as we'd like to. Our data, our experiences showed that we wanted to be able to support students both in the classroom without pulling them out or having them go to another area. And we also wanted to have the ability to have students go and process or have proactive instruction. So, this idea of having a team that could do both for our school and having the funding available, working with Matt and Val to determine how to best do this for our school, was something that we wanted to implement last year. And the success and the results and feedback from teachers and then also the data from SABERS and other individual measures, you know, showed us that this was a valuable support for our school.
So, they just, it's important that compensatory dollars are delivered individually to a school based upon their free and reduced lunch price student population. So, that's just an example of where Greenville Park was able to get some additional state funding where the other schools don't have access to, just so you're aware of why it's different. It's really intended to make sure that learners are supported. And each year, Greenville, it's not the first year that Greenville Park has had this money, but I think what Sam really has done in the last couple of years is really dug into, what are those foundational things where we could do some kind of intervention? Not something that's superfluous at the top, but what are getting to the root causes? And I think his team has done a masterful job of looking at, okay, here's what our real needs are. And then, having the courageous step to say, we're going to do something different with this money than we've done before. Because they used to do other stuff with the money that they're not doing anymore. And we need those kinds of courageous decisions coming from principals, you know, to make sure that we're allocating our resources in the way that will most help students. And you can't argue with the data. Right? So, thank you, Sam.
Other questions, comments?
I had just a couple of questions. Last year, and I'm just, you pointed to an approach you were using with a math leadership team. And if my correct, you used a math leadership team approach, and I'm just wondering if you attribute that to the strong math performance you have and if you're continuing with that approach?
Yeah. So, Eddie, similar to what Principal Santas had shared, on Wednesday mornings, they do Thursdays. We have our PLC time with our individual teams. And then, we have a rotation as well with professional development. On one Wednesday, we have our staff meetings, our Site Council leadership meets. And then, we also have these three leadership teams within the building. So, we have a math, literacy, and then a behavior support leadership team. And they're kind of cross-specialties. We have specialists, we have special education staff, grade-level representatives on those teams. And they work very closely with our math, literacy, and behavior coaches to drive whatever work is most pressing there. And then, they also, members of those teams represent with Mary Grace Hansen on the district-level leadership teams with the coaches as well.
Okay. Excellent. And I, it has been great to see all of the schools coming forward and doing an initiative around the Parent Satisfaction Survey and taking those results. And I just thought it was really a great idea that you're having in terms of contacting individual parents around their preferred method of contact. I think that's great. I think sometimes you make assumptions about what might work best, and it's just really great to go to the source and say, you know, how are we going to, what's the best way to get you this? Because you're doing all the separate, you want to be sure that it's being communicated to them in a way that they prefer. So, I think that's really great. So, thank you for taking the extra time to do that. And then, I guess just overall, I think what we always hear from Greenville is just this strong collaboration and the team that you have at Greenville Park. And it just, it's, it comes through in everything that you report and your results. So, thank you for that. And of course, I have to say too, kind of you're not only, you know, doing all this work, but you're going to be seeing a brand-new building going up in less than a year, or about a year from now, I think, we think it's going to be complete. So, we know.
By July 25th. That's what we keep telling kids.
That's right. Right. So, again, we just have to acknowledge how much extra that is on your plate, and we appreciate it. We appreciate where you got, you know, the district so far in terms of planning that building and all of the efforts. And it's kind of just begun, really, in terms of what it's going to require from you. So, we just really have to thank you for that and know that, we know that's a lot. And so, we appreciate everything that will, it will entail getting a brand-new building opened in one year's time.
Well, it's easy to put in extra work when the staff is amazing. The students will benefit so much, and our parent community and our Northfield community are so supportive of Greenville Park and all of our schools.
Excellent. Well, thank you. We will see you at the groundbreaking on September 10th. I keep saying that date numerous times. Everyone remembers and can be there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. We will move on now to our last item for discussion, which is Dr. Hillman's superintendent goals for the 2019-20 school year. And just a reminder, they were in the table file this evening. So, Dr. Hillman?
Yes. So, what you have before you in the table file this evening, just a draft of superintendent goals for 2019-20. And while I, while running and operating a bond reform in 2017 and running a bond reform in 2018 was truly a labor of love, I mean, it is something that I really cherish, the opportunity to lead for. You- You on your behalf and with successful results over two years, I'm thrilled not to have to put a goal on here because my September looks a little bit different than it has the last couple of years. So there's the celebration part, right? So what I want to tell you is that you're going to see some, a mix of goals. You're going to see some traditional kinds of goals that you've seen me from the last three years, some traditionally written goals. And then you're going to start to see some goals that are beginning to look a little bit different in how we are going to write them or how I'm proposing that I write them moving forward. Many of you know my affection for SMART goals, specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and time-bound. And one of the things of the superintendency is that that is not, you'd think, oh, it'd be really easy to write a SMART goal. And it isn't as easy as you think. And believe me, I have tried. And so we're trying to work toward what are specific SMART goals that we can write that I can support a champion, just like our school improvement plans do with stretch goals, to look at making and moving the needle in specific areas that sometimes maybe aren't always obvious to everyone else, if that makes sense. So the first goal that I have is really about institutionalizing the curriculum materials from the Center for Collaborative Classroom, CCC, as you've heard about it. One of the things that our school district administration talks about is that we're awesome at year one. So when you think about all the year-one kinds of things that we've done over the years, we've had oodles of training, we've had all sorts of opportunity for feedback. And then what we have learned, getting better at getting better, is that we have often, at the end of the year, went to that old commercial saying, "We said it and forget it," which of course, we really didn't do that, but we moved on to what's next probably a little too quickly. And so as Mary Grace Hansen and I had planned, starting with the second-step curriculum model, and now the Center for Collaborative Classroom literacy curriculum, you're seeing that we're carrying a goal over into the second year. Because when it's on this list of goals, it really shows the community that we're very intent on making sure we keep moving forward. And so we don't want to let something as important as the literacy curriculum just say, hey, we've had a lot of great feedback, it's been fantastic. But you're going to see that that goal is relatively similar to last year, that we're looking at collecting selected assessment scores. Because we're still learning within the curriculum, what are the appropriate things for us to measure on an ongoing basis in a formative way that lead up to positive MCA results? And of course, what's important about the positive, why do you care about the MCA results? Because when kids can read at a level that they perform well on the MCA, that means that they're ready for academic language and they're thus ready for the wonderful opportunities that await them from Northfield Middle School and Northfield High School. So we're going to make sure we keep after the reading curriculum. The second goal is a format that slightly differs from the way that I've done some things in the past that I want to share with you. The reason that I'm putting this goal here and the reason it's specifically targeted to this group of students, a very small group of students, we have about 80 black students in kindergarten through 12th grade. But what I can tell you is that I'm affectionate of this type of data that Shane Sevier calls "street-level data." And that street-level data is something that's more than just a test, right? It's more than a survey, but it's deep listening. And it's really deep listening to people who are impacted. I have sat with students, black students, the Black Student Union. I've attended their meetings, I've heard them, I've listened to their experiences. And it's very clear to me, as we map out the supports that we have for students, that this is an area that we need to increase our support for, not just from a local level, but from some of the things that they are reading and seeing outside of Northfield. So this is a goal that in many goals that I have, there's a very specific set of strategies. There's a very, I have to tell you, I don't have that right now because what we'll be doing is be engaging and continuing to listen to our Black Student Union, asking them, what are the things that we need to do to make sure that you are feeling supported? So we're currently looking at how we can disaggregate the Minnesota Student Survey data. That is being disaggregated as we speak. We're also looking at, if we don't believe that we can get the cell size, that can be an issue with this smaller group of students. Hope, Limes, and I are collaborating on a way that we can collect data from the student population to make sure that there's feelings of support. And what I want to be clear is, just because I'm putting a goal on my goals for 2019-20 about this student population of our black students, I want to be very clear, that doesn't mean we're lessening our support for any other group of students. But what I can just tell you from the personal interaction that I've had, especially with our Black Student Union, who are really trying to create a system of support for our black students, I believe that the work that they're doing lends itself to having an explicit superintendent's goal around this. So it does, it does differ. There's some things that we've not necessarily done in the past, but I believe that this is something that will raise all boats and it will be a good thing for not just our black students, but for everyone else as well. I also notice I made a small typographical error in that goal, and I will fix that in the formal piece. The third is really talking about making sure that we draft a plan and a potential schedule for an earlier school start dates, school day start time for secondary students. And that I will bring that forward for the board's consideration no later than December 1, 2019. This is something that you have asked as a priority. Now, I want to tell you, I'm not planning to wait until December 1, 2019, but I want to make sure that I gave myself a little bit of room should some unforeseen things come up. Because if I put a date, I want to honor that. And so I would rather under-promise and over-perform, if that makes any sense on a goal like that. So I know that that is something the board has asked us to continue. And again, communicating the importance to the public, we wanted to make sure we included this. And finally, as you know, we have an affection, maybe unhealthy, about continuous improvement. That was a joke, sorry about that. We are all in on making sure that we establish not just accidental continuous improvement. I think that for a long time, we all have really talked a lot about continuous improvement and we have really meant it. But I don't think we, we didn't know, we didn't know about continuous improvement. And the work that we've done with our partners in student education over the last year have really shown us some blind spots that we've had about that continuous improvement has to be more than an annual report. It has to be living and it has to be breathing and we have to be able to look at it in a very different way. So what I'll be doing with our administrative team and some staff members over the years, developing a different method of reporting and measuring, or not measuring, but reporting and analyzing our continuous improvement in what is called a scorecard fashion. So it will be more table-like, it will be more specific with, even easier to read goals and targets. And so we'll be working on developing that, we'll be asking you for your work. And how we also label that and how we categorize it might be a little bit different than what our current school improvement planning processes. But when we have seen school districts who have taken the next step in really, truly committing to a systems of continuous improvement, moving to the scorecard system, as what they call it, really appears to have much more effectiveness in terms of following through and making sure that we're on the right track to achieve those goals. And so again, we don't want to set and forget things, right? We want to make sure that they are living and breathing and they're part of our daily work. So by April 15, 2020, I will be sharing a draft of a new method and presentation format for your consideration as a way to report and to monitor our continuous improvement. And then finally, as I said, that, you know, the goals here, I have these four goals, do not encompass all of the work that I do this year. If I could write a goal about that we will have no days canceled due to snow, I would love to put that in there, but I don't have the ability to do that. But again, it does not say all the other stuff that we do during the year. I just want to remind people that these goals are in addition to the work. And in many cases, they're supporting the work around our vision and strategic plan, as well as our near-term and ongoing priorities, right? There are things that I think you can easily make that connection in these goals. But in addition, they also will be helping us pursue the goals outlined in the district's World's Best Workforce Plan. So these are not the only sets of goals that we have, but they are some of the priorities that I believe should set the work that I have for you for the 2019-20 school year. So again, they are draft goals for this year. I'd invite any questions at this time. I would ask you at the next meeting to approve them for me.
Okay, excellent. Amy.
A nice draft. I think you've missed one thing that's going to take a big part of it, or sort of put it in a few little tiny words here that I don't think fully encompass it. And that's, while we don't have a referendum coming up-
Yes.
-you still have a lot of work with the elementary projects, and that's going to be taking a lot of your time. And I was wondering if you would consider including some goal that, so you can have credit for all that work that you're done, you're doing when we go back to review your work for the year.
So I attempted to write a construction goal about seven times, and I will certainly go back and try it again. So the issue will be, what are the measurements that I'm trying to bring forward that I have the ability to influence? And so that is a piece that I'm trying to get through because there are some things like steel tariffs that I don't always have control over, or shipping, you know, and some of those kinds of things. So that's, that is, of course, I know that all of you know that I'll be working to help manage the construction process. But as I was trying to write it into a goal, the ability for me to write something in which I had the ability to truly have, and I certainly can go back and take another stab at it, to ask for your, and if that's something the board would like me to put on paper, I'm happy to do it. It's just a matter of, when I write something, I want to make sure that I can say, that I look at it and say, yep, that is something that I believe is attainable. Of course, it's attainable, it's just a matter of trying to make sure that I'm going through and looking at, making sure I can correctly articulate that in a way that I can have some kind of measurement through the year. Of course, it would be that all the buildings open on time and under budget. That's what the goal is, right? So-
Dr. Hillman, I think, Ellen, I just have one piece that I thought would be really applicable. So I have really valued these. And I think you have complete control over how it's communicated to the board and the community. So that would be one suggestion.
Okay, very good. I can work with that.
Because these are fantastic.
So what I'm hearing you say, Dr. Iverson, is that providing regular communication to the board about the construction process and that the board would be okay with that goal around the communication portion? Because I think that that is something that I could very clearly, and it does go along and it does, you know, provide that opportunity. Is that something that people could live with?
I would say definitely that. And if there's a component where continuous forward progress, without having to put an exact date on it, but to keep things moving forward. And what Ellen said inspired me to think the communication, not just to the board, but to the community in appropriate ways, because I know that there's lots of community questions.
I can write that.
I would say with all our construction projects and what the bond is, our responsibilities to the taxpayer and the community, to tell them that we're getting that stuff done. So it's just, I mean, there's plenty on your plate. I don't need any more goals. We just need to just get what we've got done and committed to, to go back to the taxpayer and say, boom, you know, we completed this, 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 and this. You know, life's not perfect, construction's not perfect, we've got some great collaborators and players working on all this stuff. I just think, just to move through that and get that done and then communicate that to the community. And, you know, that's plenty.
Thank you for that feedback. And I will try to see if I can encompass this discussion into something that you can see in front of you. Because I do think that there's some, I appreciate the work to help me clarify this part. I hope, I understand your record, it's not as easy, you know, this one's a tougher, you'd think it would be easy to write, but I'm relatively decent at writing these goals. And I just have to tell you, I struggle a little bit.
Tom, you have a question?
Yeah, well, just going, having gone through a building construction, it never goes this plan. And number three, you're talking about a potential change for an earlier school day or later school start?
Oh, my fault. I apologize. It's a later, later, this is why it's a draft, right? A later school start time. So that's exactly what it is. No, we're not starting earlier. Good catch, Tom, thank you. I'm a little bit embarrassed by this, please accept my apologies.
Well, we all looked at it. Tom, thank you for catching us, you know?
And believe it or not, I do actually proofread these before they come before you.
And there's always a great opportunity to remind Dr. Hillman that he's not perfect, he is human after all.
Not allowed, yes.
Other questions, comments? Ellen?
So I, one, I really like that we continue to have these superintendency goals. And I guess I was going to talk about a little bit how I've been using them, and then that would follow up with my question. So for me, I think these are really helpful to me because they're at a district level. And I see them as sort of enterprise goals. And then as a board member, it can really inform my decision-making processes in terms of finance, in terms of policy. And so I really value these. And I think Julie and I always get nervous about having too many goals. I think you're going to do the construction piece, so I like the idea that we're adding it just because we're going to give you credit for something we expect and it's going to be happening. And the second goal, I really value that we're putting our necks out there and we're in an authentic way, it sounds like, thinking about how I would use this, it's a challenge because as you said, we don't have strategies. But it sounds like what the strategies are, are to figure out some ways to listen to what's happening on the ground. And if we were going to get an update from you, we would learn more about those, what we're learning about it and understanding the situation. And so there's, it's going to be harder for us as board members to think about how we can internalize that enterprise goal right now, other than knowing that it's a goal and if there are ways that we can follow up on asking about supports and thinking about ways that we can be listening to. I mean, that's the one I'm just struggling with and trying to figure out as a board member, how I can be a good more board member on it. But it seems like that's what I'm hearing from you on that, is that-
Yes, I think that's very fair. So one of the, I will share with you the strategy that, the macro strategy that we'll be using. We have learned a process from our friends in student education called leader rounding. So it's a term that we use specifically, actually, it's specific to our employees. That's how we are working to begin with. And so we piloted some of that last spring. And it's very simple. So if Julie and I were doing leader rounding, and I'm the principal of Julie's school, I might come in and say, you know, Julie, I just really appreciate all the work that you're doing here, everybody gives positive affirmation. And I'm going to have to say, hey, how are things going right? What's going well? I'm going to really listen, I now shut my mouth and I really listen, I know that's hard for you to believe, I can do that, but I'm going to really listen to Julie, I'm going to make sure she has the opportunity to share that with me. Then I'm going to say, what are some things that are in the way of you achieving the goals that we've set, you know, in our PLCs where our school? Are there barriers that I could help remove? Again, that deep listening, you know, in terms of making sure that I'm hearing, what are those things that we could help to remove to help improve the circumstance? In this case, for the classroom teacher. And then the final question that we ask is, is there anybody around you who has been really, or especially helpful in the work that you've been doing? Again, in pursuit of our school district vision and goals. We take that affirmation then that Julie would share it to me, I'm going to go, I'm sure she's giving it to Amy, I'm going to go, hey, Amy, I want to let you know, I was meeting with Julie the other day. And I'm going to be very specific, I'm going to say, I want to share this with you, and I want to share exactly how you have helped someone else. The research behind this suggests that this format increases employee engagement and it increases trust within the system because Julie has shared something with me that I haven't been, in terms of the barriers, that I have followed where I come back and I close the loop. You know, I just want to let you, we actually use something, we're using something called a stoplight report. And then our thing that we call a 3-2-1, leader round three things that we heard, two things that we're going, that are now things that we need to work on, and one leader action that we've taken. We're looking, I'm looking at using that same framework in this case, because this is a harder thing to measure, right? In terms of that, those feelings of support, though there are some questions at the Minnesota Student Survey that we think can really lend some ability to that. But what we know is that we need to continue the dialogue. I'm part of the Northfield Promise Equity Team, which is a new team that has been developed within the community, it's got maybe 16 stakeholders as part of that. This is actually mirroring one of that team's goals for this year. And as we discussed it, we really thought, okay, we're kind of through the planning process for this year, but there's really a sense of urgency around this. And so rather than waiting another year until I had it all figured out completely, I felt it was really important to bring it forward to, you know, really support the work of our Northfield Promise network. So that's, that's just an example of how we would try to attack that goal initially qualitatively, because I can come to you and say, hey, I've met with these folks, here are the things that, you know, I can use the 3-2-1, here are the things that they've said that were barriers, here are the things we've done in response. And sometimes, a barrier comes forward that you can't overcome. But in that case, you at least commit, I want you to know, I clearly heard you say this, I understand it, here's what, why I'm not able to work on that right now, or here's why we're not able to make that better right now. At least the person knows that they've been heard and that there's some thought process around it. So, well, I'll tell you, we piloted this with staff last spring, off the charts, one of the best things that we have ever done. It's, there's, there's not much that actually rivals it, it's pretty fantastic, incredibly time-intensive. So as, when we're working with this with employees, we are looking at how we can do some breakdown of some of the, try to scale it a bit. But this is a strategy, especially with our black students, that I think will really work well. And again, I want to be very clear, this doesn't mean that we're not focusing on the goal benefit of our other students, but this is a student population that we think we can learn some things from to really help increase their school experience.
Other questions, comments on the goals? So I just had a couple of comments.
Other questions, comments on the goals? So I just had a couple comments. So I really appreciate Amy talking about the construction piece, because I think it is really going to, you know, it's going to take a significant amount of your time. I think in addition, you know, you highlight, we always, we also have the ongoing priorities and near-term priorities in the district, which you obviously, you know, spend a lot of time and time and effort. So I do like the addition of that. My only, I'm a bit reticent that then you would have five goals and we're going from four to five. I know that the super, the School Board Association and some of those kind of use three as a, as a good guideline for superintendent goal. So I don't want to, you know, overwhelm your plate. I mean, clearly, the board has given you an amazing performance review of 4.94 out of five. So we clearly are, you know, very supportive and feel very positively about the work you're doing for the district. And these are all, you know, really excellent. I would just ask that maybe you consider that, the amount of them in light of some other things going on. And I agree, I mean, they're great goals and they're all really important things. So, you know, I'm kind of saying two things that, you know, two different things at the same time, but, but I understand that. But I just also want to be sure that, that we're, you know, there's not too much on your plate with, with going from four goals where we've been to all of a sudden going to five and really feeling going in that maybe a number like three could be, could be good. I get that there's, you know, no, nothing, you know, scientific or maybe even, you know, critical about that number, but it's a good guideline. And I think there's reasons that support having, you know, three, maybe four goals. So I would just ask you to consider that. And, and again, I appreciate you bringing the draft and giving us the opportunity to do some, you know, to provide the feedback. And I think Ellen is spot-on when she says, as board members, you know, the most important thing we do is hire a superintendent. And the most important thing we do is, is to ensure that we're setting you up to be successful, because that's what, that's what drives the success of the district. So I appreciate Ellen saying, from a board member perspective, when we evaluate your performance and we look at where the priorities we're placing on you in an already very stretched position, you know, are we doing the right thing to, to move forward with this? And so, and how are we going to utilize this? So I appreciate Ellen really articulating that for us. So I think that, you know, if we've provided you enough of the feedback that you wanted from us tonight, I know your plan was to come back at our September 9th board meeting for final approval. I think that if, you need the opportunity to review and think and even come back with one more draft, I think that's fine. I mean, it's not, you're not, just not working in that time. So whatever you feel comfortable with. And then certainly, if, if you want more feedback from the board, we certainly want to give it to you. But those are just some of the thoughts that I had. And I thank board members for sharing their, their thoughts on it as well.
So I really appreciate the feedback. I thank you for digging in, you know, to the goals and giving me straightforward information. So what I'll do is I'll reflect on this a little bit. I will, if board members are comfortable, I would like to ask you to approve the goals in September, because I just, I really struggle when we start to approve things after a month of school. So I just, you know, I think we need to get this going. What I would hope is that I will reflect on this, I'll work through it. And then if people are okay, I'll collaborate with Chair Pritchard and, you know, to get her follow-up feedback and then bring you what I would consider to be the final draft. And I already have a couple of ideas. I do agree, Jeff makes a very good point about making sure that we're communicating with the taxpayer. I think that's a really important part during this process. And I really do appreciate the recognition, you know, that the construction projects are something that are taking, it's not just, it's not just my time, but you know, Val Mertsdorf and Jim Colseth. And we are very lucky that frankly, Canute Construction is off the charts unbelievable. And so we really have a great owner's rep who is running that. But there's a couple of ways that I can see doing it. There's, there's the possibility of writing a goal, or there's the possibility of adding it to the italicized area, where I highlight that we're still doing the work, you know, the World's Best Workforce, we're still doing. And I mean, I could, I could see adding it there so that when the public looks at it, that they see, oh, yes, that, that construction thing is. So if you'll allow me just to reflect upon it a little bit, I really value the feedback and we'll come back with another iteration for you in September.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. So with that, we have worked our way through items for discussion and reports. So we can now move on to approval of the consent grouping. There were just some personnel items in the table file that were to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping moved by Jeff? Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will move on for items for individual action. I believe we have four this evening. We will look for a motion on our first item for individual action, which is the 2019-20 e-learning plan that Dr. Hillman presented at our August 12th board meeting. So is there a motion to approve that plan? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Is there any questions or comments regarding the e-learning plan that Dr. Hillman has laid out? Nope. Okay, excellent. All those in favor then of approving the e-learning plan, formerly known as flexible learning days? Is there a motion to, I'm sorry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second item for individual action is the Policy 713 Student Activity Accounting, which came as a result of the extra, or the new legislation that was required. And so this policy that was discussed at our August 12th meeting sets forth the parameters of control and accountability for student activity funds. And as you recall, Val did a thorough presentation on that at our past board meeting. So is there a motion to adopt Policy 713 Student Activity Accounting as presented? Moved by Tom. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Any questions or comments on this policy? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item for individual action is a change order based on the new Greenville Park Elementary bid package. So I will ask for a motion and then we'll have an opportunity for questions of either Dr. Hillman or Val Mertsdorf. So is there a motion to approve the general conditions fee and the construction contingency fee to be increased to $2,155,874? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. Any questions or comments on this? No?
How much is the increase?
I'll have Val, I think Val may just have a, provide a brief overview.
Sure. So the, the last one that we did for the Bridgewater project, we actually included in the approval of the bids. And so this was just a step that we missed. And so we wanted to make sure we got it through. The total increase for this change order is $2,155,874. And there's a, I believe there was a detail sheet behind it that shows how they calculated that total. And those rates come from the contract that the board approved with them initially when we hired them.
So it's really in the contract form, or in this form, formalizing what we had already agreed to in the contract?
Yep. So the, the contract that we had agreed to had a lump sum basically for kind of the preliminary work. And then it was hourly rates for their onsite work. And so now that that's here and ready to go, they have a formal estimate of how much that'll be.
That's great. That's, that's a really good explanation. So that, that helps us to know where we're at. With that being said from Val, is there other questions? Tom?
It says the, below where the numbers are, it says the date of substantial completion as of the date of this change order therefore is, and there's nothing there. Does there need to be?
I don't think that it's necessary, because the, the date of substantial completion is on the actual contracts with the vendors. And they're just managing that. And so I don't think, I suspect it's actually in the original contract that we signed, because it was for a certain number of months until the work was done. I can ask them that. I don't think it makes a difference for this particular approval, but I can certainly ask the question, because we'll be doing this three more times.
Sorry.
Okay. Yeah. Other questions or comments? Amy?
So Val, I just want to make sure I understand correctly-
Yeah.
-that this is all money that we knew we were going to be paying and it was all counted as part of the referendum and everything that we did. And we're just doing this as paperwork-
Yes.
-that is making sure. Okay.
Yes. Yep, it's included in the budget. They, they have these numbers and all the estimates that were provided and we are on track currently.
Thank you.
Yep.
Excellent questions. Any anything else before we go to both? All right, we have a motion and a second. So is a motion to approve the general conditions fee and the construction contingency fee to be increased to $2,155,874. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our last item for individual action is the 2019, 2000 through 2021 Master Agreement with the Northfield Education Association as negotiated. Is there a motion to approve that agreement? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Questions, comments regarding our new contract with the NEA Northfield Education Association? Ellen?
I would just like to say again how impressed I was as being a part of the negotiation team and seeing the work that on both sides of the table, you know, being an observer as, as the board member in the room. And just, it's, it's, you know, really wonderful that we can work through and, and reach an agreement and feel like on both sides that this was the right agreement to have in front of us. And I'm just really pleased with, you know, Molly and Dr. Hillman and Val. And on the other side of the table, the, you know, the instructional staff that, that steps up and, and members of the NEA that do their, their hard work too.
Thank you. We really appreciate that. We believe it's a model, as Noel has said before. Our negotiations are really a model. It's really a conversation. We're so grateful to all the people that you mentioned. Of course, President of the Association, Kevin Dahl, Ray Cugray, their lead negotiator, was a very fruitful round of negotiations with a 2% degree, 2% increase to the base salary and issued the two years of the agreement. And again, for another year, no increase to the health insurance contribution from the district because of the wild success of our self-funded dental and health program. So again, we thank the Northfield Education Association. We thank the board for their guidance and support. And we're very pleased to be finishing this in August. There are some districts who haven't even started yet. So we're very pleased to be where we're at.
Yes, thank you, Ellen, for those wonderful remarks. And I'd like to thank Dr. Iverson and Noel Stratton for serving on the negotiation team and representing the board, along with myself. So I did a motion and a second, correct?
Okay.
So losing it a little bit here, so I wanted to be sure. So with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excellent. Next, that is it. So for items for individual action, we now have items for information. Again, our wonderful construction update number 12. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, and I think that you'll see that we continue to add to the construction update in terms of the activities that have taken place in the last month. You heard the latest one that we didn't get in for today, that the construction fence is up at Greenville Park. And I think the other key thing is just reminding people, the Greenville Park ceremonial groundbreaking will be on September 10th at 6:00 PM and you're all invited to participate.
Is the community invited?
Absolutely, yep. We're working on those channels as we speak, yep.
Yes, we will roll out all stops for that, because that's huge, right?
Correct.
So just one point of clarification. So Anita and I had a chance to talk about how we were shadowing sort of previous. And the district just finished a very rigorous process of renegotiating our printer contract. And so with working with some of the new printers and whatever, we made the decision that we'll just print it as, as a regular typeface, because you can obviously see as it, as it goes down and not have to worry about trying to get some shaded thing happening, because I know it's not always coming through well. So this is such a great document and it's just so great to have it continually updated that I, I think it's great. One question, Dr. Hillman, you and I had a conversation last week about the location of construction updates on the, on the website.
Yep.
It was a little unwieldy to try to find and there's such great information there. I know if you go to northfieldpublicschools.org/construction, you find it. But when you go to the actual website, it gets a little, you know, the homepage. So I'm not sure if there's a resolution to that.
Yep. So we are going to be working with the communications, first of all, just to redo the page that has the construction updates. It's really done as a blog format, which is great for most things. But the way that we're updating it, it really just needs to be a regular webpage. So we're working to get that corrected. And then in addition, we'll make sure that that is on the front page of the website as a story. And then once we get to the first week of school and enrollment is really sunsetted, we'll change the little enrollment button at the top to be construction updates. So we just want to make sure that enrollment button is really present for people as we start the school year. But we'll switch that like we did with the referendum, where we switched that to be referendum. So those are the things that we'll see in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, that's excellent. Because I know board members who've been on that, you know, understand and realize what great information in Canute's and is it in the loop, is that what it's called?
Yep, that's very good.
So it's just great. And the time lapse cam, time lapse camera is so cool. And so I just want to be sure that-
It's prominent.
-whether they intentionally look for it or just happen upon it, it's great information. And to Jeff, your point, just really being able to tell the, our community what's happening. And I think being sure that that's readily available on our website. Obviously, we have other means of, of getting that communicated, but that is a main source for a lot of our families. So, thank you. Good, excellent. So with that, those are our items for information. Future meetings, Monday, September 9th. Then again, Monday, September 23rd and Monday, October 14th. All of those meetings at 7:00 PM in the Northfield High School Media Center. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn, moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.